May we advise the Honorable so please settle down for a moment we will start the session.
Nudhu Surfa Al Muwwawali, Ulin Rasmiyan, Ankititan Haji Jasa.
Session number 1110 of the Port Regular Session of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous, the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament is now called to order. Please rise for the prayer to be led by Stads Honorable Sek MP Muhammad Nazir Ibil to be followed by National Anthem and Bangsa Moro Hep.
Wa qadribbukum aduuni astaqilakum. Allahumma pahada du'au na waminkal idyaba. Oh Allah, gawin mo ang pagtitipon namin na ito ay pagtitipong may kasamang habag. At gawin mo ang paghiwalay naming pagkaraan nito ay paghiwalay na malayo sa kasalanan. At huwag mong gawin ang isa sa amin mula sa amin sa pagitan namin ang sawi o kapuspalad. Oh Allah, itatag mo para sa aming sambayan ang muslim, sambayan ang bangsa moro, muslim, kristian, lumad, katutubo. Ang isang bagay na makatuwiran kung saan ang mga susunod sa iyo ay paparangalan. Ang mga sumusuway sa iyo ay gagabayan. Ang kabutihan, ang may pagutos at ang masama ay may pagbabawal. Oh Allah, ipaggalob mo sa amin ang katiwasayan sa aming mga tahanan at sa aming bansa. At pagbutihin mo ang aming mga pinuno at yaong mga may-ari ng autoridad. At gawin mo ang namumuno sa amin ay mapasakamay ng mga may takot sa iyo. Na maka Diyos at susunod tungo sa iyong pagkalugod, oh Allah na siyang Panginoon ng buong daigdig. Oh Allah, patnubayan mo ang aming mga pinuno at mga leader tungo sa iyong pagmamahal at pagkalugod sa salita, gawa at hangarin. Oh Allah, pagkaliban mo ang aming mga pinuno at mga leader ng matuwid na tagapayo natutulong sa kanila. Upang gampanan ang kanilang mga pananagutan at tungkulin. Oh Allah, ilayo mo sa kanila ang mga mapandinlang na tuxo, lantadman o lihim. At hawakan mo sila sa kanilang mga noo tungo sa kabutihan at takot sa iyo ya Allah. Oh Allah, ang sino mang magbabalak ng masama sa kanila ay ibalik mo sa kanila ang masamang balak nila sa kanilang mga sarili. Oh Allah, pag-isahin mo ang kanilang salita, ang kanilang hanay. At gabayan mo ang kanilang opinyon sa pamamagitan ng iyong habag o pinakamahabagin sa mga lahat ng mahabagin. Idadiya anassullahu alfat, waraita nasa yadhuluna fi dinilahi afwaja, asabeh. Bhamdi rabbika washtaghfir, inna huqana tawaba. Rabbana atina fit dunia hasana, wa fil aakhirati hasana, wa kina adhaban nar. Wasallallah wasallama ala nabina muhammad, wa ala adhihi wa sahibhi ajma'in. Wa akhir dawana ala hamdulillahi rabbil alamin.
Ayan ang pambansang awit mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Kayang magilin, kelasasira talan, alam ng puso sa titipoy buhay. Upang midira, kuya ka ng magiting, saman luru pi, ikapasisi diu. Sa manlurupi, ikapasisi diw. Sanadatang tutok sa sikwaya, salami kong pagka. Ayunadang tula kawitsa, pagdaya ni damagar. Amisakang kawatawat, kuytakun, ay karanatini. Kamituinak, paronya kayda, pamayibak itinig. Luwana paraw ng war, habib pa'ksikka. Kuega mit sa bibito. Ami ni dayanapak, ay wagabi. Ang pagoday ng kahil sa'yo. Simula on agang ngayon, isa ang naging layon. Magkaisaan pagkulor, karitingan ay baguton. Umayu tayo mula sa hamon ng nakaraan, diyabus ang paganim na buhanla. Pinagaku sa muso at paliniwala, ang nihawo para sa kabataan. Bangsa Moro ay tagunpay, bulanapawis suwad buhay. Kabayapan, katabukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, pagpaday Bangsa Moro. Bangsa Moro, Bangsa Moro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami't sayoy magpatay, mananatili sa puso't isipan. Ang kahabog humimpay nga nagbuwis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay tagunpay, bulanapawis suwad buhay. Kabayapan, katabukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, pagpaday Bangsa Moro.
Now, may I request the Secretary General to determine the corum of this particular session?
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Roll call, Honorable Members of BTI Parliament, Abbas Akmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib, Adyong Rusti, Alamiya Liza, Alaudyen Mosber, Ali Lanang Junior, Amboluto Soharto, Ampatuan Baintan, Anetin Susana, Antao Muhammad Kelly, Antok Tomanda, Azarul Habir, Asnavi Dan, Belindong Ahmad Amir, Bayang Sulfikar Ali, Benito Abdul Basit, Kandau Maruf, Kutan Utosalem, Delanggalan Hasimi, Dumama Alba Syailaiha, Ibil Muhammad Nazir, Ismail Soharto, Estino Matarul, Gayak Amiruddin, Gera Edward, Haji Abdullah Khalid, Hasyim Abdullah, Hasan Hatimil, Hataman Abrar, Ibay Ibrahim, Iqbal Mohager, Ismail Rasul, Jaduri Raisa, Sikiri Sharipuddin, Kadatuan Kitam Junior, Karun Bai Ali, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Loong Benjamin, Loong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makakuang Abdurauh, Magapar Abdullah, Malang Boots Junior, Mantawel Bailing, Mastura Esak, Matalan Japar Apollo Mikael, Mindosa Freylin, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Nor Reda, Mitmo Grasol Junior, Mundir Ali Rakim, Munius Hussein, Oranon Sweb, Pakasyam Ubaidah, Pagayaw Alindato, Pak Abdul Wahab, Arkasio Randolph, Pyang Ramon Senior, Rakim Amer Jakaria, Salindab Said, Salik Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semar Romeo, Sheikh Said, Sinarimbo Nagib, Sinulinding Cadil Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Sumagayan Aminuddin, Tan Nabil, Osman Azpar, Uyoyod Sitifahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Alhamdulillah, with sixty-seven members of the parliament responding to the call, I hereby declare, I'm Mr. Presiding Officer with sixty-seven members of the parliament who responded to the call.
With the sixty-seven members of the parliament responding to the call, I hereby declare the presence of a corum. Bismillah Rahman Rahim. Before we proceed to the consideration of the item in today's order of business, I deem it my solemn duty to state for the record the reason for the vacancy and the position position of Speaker of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. With deep sorrow and reverence, we acknowledge the passing of the late Honorable Speaker Pangalian M. Belindung who returned to the mercy of Allah, the most compassionate on October 2, 2025. His passing has left not only an empty chair in the chamber, but a silence that echoes in the very heart of the institution. We did not lose a speaker alone. We lose a venerable stepman, a man of law and public virtue, a steadfast voice of reason who helped steer this parliament through the session of trial and transition. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala envelope him his infinite mercy and grant him a general fairness. Our beloved Wali of the Bangsa Moro, His eminent Sheikh Muslim Jamadin, distinguished members, the parliament, honorable deputy speakers, members of the cabinet, religious and traditional leaders who are with us today, who are present, esteemed guests, members of the media and the beloved people Bangsa Moro. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Today, we stand a moment both solemn and defining. This gathering is not a mere continuation of our proceeding. It is a reaffirmation of the covenant that bind us, our duty to preserve the dignity and continuity of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. The speakership we are about to peel is not an ornament or blank, but a sacred trust, the vision through which the collective will of the parliament is tempered with justice, humility and wisdom. As we open the session to choose the new speaker, let us remember that authority draws its strength only when anchored in conscience and that leadership loses meaning which forsake from ambition and virtue. What we decide today must transcend affiliation and personal interest. It must speak only what is right for the Bangsa Moro, for its people and for the generation who will inherit this government. With humility and conviction, I urge this parliament to proceed with calmness, mind, clarity of purpose and the highest decorum, repeating public service. May this parliament ever remain a sanctuary of truth and conscience. In this place, every decision honors both the trust of our people and the divine guidance of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Today's session pretends the election of the speaker. For the information of the body, I have had a civil causes, post-cocuses with our colleagues to keep the unity of the parliament. I am happy to report that we have arrived at a consensus with the members of the parliament. In this regard, may I request Honorable Deputy Nabiltan so he speak up on this particular issue.
Bismillah Rahman Rahim, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Dear Deputy, dear Chief Minister and our Wali, first of all, I'd like to thank my supporters who have expressed confidence in me to lead this chamber as Speaker of the Parliament. And for that, I am most grateful. But I would like to propose that I, I'd like to nominate Muhammad Sweb Yakub as our speaker. I am doing this in the interest of harmony and unity of this parliament. Thank you very much.
Is there any Sumagayan, Audin Sumagayan, are you there to speak? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mr. Chief Minister, with that nomination, I sincerely move to close the period of nomination for the office of the Parliament Speaker, Mr. Chief Minister. I so move.
There any seconded, please? Is there any objection? Being hearing none, the motion to close the nomination is now approved. Considering that there is no other candidate, the Secretary General sir by directed to call its member and to state the name of a candidate they are voting for as Speaker of the Bangsa Moro Parliament upon being called. Yes, nominated, without explanation, only they can stand on.
Ah, tayo nalang, tayo nalang lahat, since so lang candidate, okay, okay, okay. Okay, for those supporters for the Honorable Member of the Parliament Muhammad Sheikh Yakub, please rise. Mister, Mister Presiding Officer, as observation to the Secretariat, everyone has rise.
So thank you very much, Secretariat, for that. So with the unanimous decision or voting of all the members of the parliament, now declare that Muhammad Sweb Yakub is our Speaker, the Parliament Chair, Parliament of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Parliament. Before, before, before proceeding, before proceeding with the undertaking, is there any more concerns or other matters or objections or whatever? Gentlemen, Bayang?
Mr. Chief Minister, yes, please. Ah, I move that the position of floor leader be declared vacant. I so move, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Hey, what was the, is there anybody to talk about that? Is there any objection or what? Hearing, hearing none?
Ah, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that we suspend the session.
Okay, so Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chief Minister? Please, 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 what will, what will be the, what, what, what is the pleasure of?
I move that we divide the house pertaining to the vacancy of the floor leader position. Thank you very much, Mr. Chief Minister.
Is that your motion? So the motion is approved?
Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Yes, please ma'am.
Is there any legal basis for the declaration of vacancy in the position of the floor leader, Mr. Speaker? Based on the rules?
So, what to so what is your, the lady, the lady?
Mr. Speaker, I move, Mr. Chief Minister, I move that we suspend the session.
Suspend it, then there's two suspension, there is two motion? Please, Deputy Speaker?
I also move to suspend the session, Chief Minister. The matter raised, the motion raised by the gentleman from Cotabato City should be discussed in a, in a more orderly manner before proceeding with your resolution on this matter.
Yes, please, gentlemen, Pramsalu.
Mr. Speaker, the matter of electing an officer or declaring a position maker is a prerogative of the parliament. Any rules can be modified by the parliament if it's so necessary. If any member raises, raise that, raise that as an issue. That particular issue is raised by the gentleman from Cotabato. That particular issue is raised by the gentleman from Cotabato. And therefore, that has to be considered, although they are asking for time, but that consideration should be passed back to the Parliament to determine where is the, whether there is an urgency for the matter to be decided or not. That is the, as far as my recollection is correct, of the election of officers of the Parliament, because it is within the province of the Parliament to determine its officer when it is necessary. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
So, what is the pleasure of the gentleman, Pransul?
Therefore, this Parliament can decide after perhaps, uh, to decide whether we can proceed with the nomination for the new Parliament or we depay the consideration. There are only two matters to decide, whether we can proceed with the election or open the nomination for a new Floor Leader or depay the decision. So that's the matter. As far as I'm concerned, this, the issue of whether the position can be declared vacant is timely because it is raised as an issue. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Chief Minister, okay, okay, please, gentlemen from Magindanao?
Bismillah Rahmanirahim. Uh, Honorable Chief Minister, uh, Bangsa Muro Wali, stands, uh, Slim Yamadin. I'm looking at the agenda of this meeting. Only the issue of electing a Bangsa Muro Parliament Speaker is mentioned here. So because of this, I think the better part of judgment is not to introduce another agenda while after the issue of Speaker, a Parliament is settled. So I would like to suggest or move that the issue of the other leaders of Parliament shall be discussed later, not now. So that's my motion, uh, Your Honor, Chief Minister.
Yes, what, Mister Chief Minister in addition?
Mister Chief Minister, please, please.
Uh, Mister Chief Minister, we have, for the record, we have already elected a Speaker. And, uh, the first thing that should be done right now before any matter be taken up by this Parliament is to swear in the Speaker and allow him to preside, Mister Speaker, Mister Chief Minister. Because he is now the Speaker of, the elected Speaker is now the official Presiding of, with due respect to the Chief Minister, with due respect, we have elected a Speaker and he should be allowed to preside and deal with the other matters after he has, uh, taken his, after he has assumed his office. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Gentlemen, yes.
The matter of electing officers should go back to the sense of the Parliament. Nobody, no group could dictate when and where, but it should be returned back to the sense of the Parliament. If it is the sense of the Parliament that, uh, the election of the Speaker carries with it the election of other Members or for that matter for the Floor Leader, I'm sorry, with all due respect, then it has to be returned back to the Parliament. The power of the Parliament rests in the Members of the Parliament. So my suggestion, Mister Speaker, for you to have sense of the Parliament is to vote on the motion whether to depay or to conduct an election today.
Yes, Magindanao MP, so, so Ambuluto, please.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, our Honorable Chief Minister. Um, this is supposed to be a day of unity and solidarity. Now, uh, the motion of our good brother, Brother Sol Bayam was very simple and it was simply a motion. Then it has to be processed in accordance with our rules. Now, how do we consider that? That should be deferred to the Parliament already. Without, uh, prejudging as to its outcome, there was simply a motion and this motion would have to be acted upon, our Honorable Chief Minister. So I, I most respectfully pray this, uh, the Honorable Chief Minister to go forth with, with the motion and process it in accordance with our rules. Yun lang po.
There's, there are two motions.
And them?
One motion is to declare the floor majority plural position as vacant and two position, uh, to number two, two, number two is to divide the house.
So, yes, Mister?
Am I right for that, Mister Sponsor?
Mister Speaker, there, there is also a motion to suspend the session, Mister, uh, Presiding Officer.
So, Mister, Mister Chairman, uh, Honorable Chief Minister, the manifestation of our good Floor Leader as to suspension may be taken by itself as a motion for suspension or may be taken as an objection on the matter of the earlier motion of the Honorable Bayam. So, that is where, that is the, what is pending before the Honorable Chief Minister. So there's a motion and there's another motion, uh, distinct, but may be taken as an objection to the motion of the Honorable Bayam. So, uh, if it is taken as an objection and not given due course, then, uh, the only option right now is to ask the entire plenary how to proceed, Mister Chair, uh, our Honorable Chief Minister, sir.
Before Floor Leader, uh, is it proper for the Chair to ask this body? Kung na nag-akba ko sa motion ni Kwan, mo kusini Bayam, to so to? Mak, mak, can you, can you, can you help me on this? I, I have, I have already bang the gabel. Then of which the motion was the reason why I bang the gabel. Can you please assist me on this? Hmm. Yeah. So, is there any other legal who can assist us on this?
Mister Speaker, as, um, I have observed, Mister Speaker, Mister Presiding Officer, no, um, resolution of the earlier motion has been, uh, given. Mister Speaker, Mister Presiding Officer, thus, uh, if the good gentleman from, um, Magindanao and Cotabato City MP, uh, Suharto Ambuluto has pointed, if he has point, since he has pointed out that it can be, um, eh, uh, anito, treated as an objection, Mister Speaker, then there's no final resolution on the same. Mister Speaker, that is why I am asking and, uh, seeking the indulgence of the Honorable Presiding Officer to suspend the session.
I, Mister?
Mister Chief Minister.
Sir, sir, madam Floor Leader, that's why I seek the assistance of all of you. Kung sana ko nagbang ng gabel, kasi kung sana ko nang bang ng gabel, I am sorry to tell you that I am, I will stand for it. Pero kailangan katulungan niyo ako dun sa ganun. Hmm.
Mister Chief Minister?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I humbly reiterate my earlier motion to divide the house. So if there's an objection, we will divide the house. Thank you very much, Mister Chief Minister.
There are two, that, uh, MP Bayam, there are two motion that came from you. One is the declaration of, uh, to declare the Floor Leader as vacant and also the division of the house. Sa san bayon ang?
So, Mister Chief Minister?
Yes.
Yes, clearly, I made a two motions. First is to declare the position of Floor Leader vacant. Now, then there was an objection, so I motioned again to divide the house to, to resolve the issue at heart. Thank you very much, Mister Chief Minister.
If I may, Mister, Mister, uh, Chief Minister?
Okay, 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 yes. MP Abdurahim?
Thank you, uh, Honorable Chief Minister. Bismillah wa salaatu wa salaam ala rasulillah. Wa baad. Um, we had a, as the Chief Minister have mentioned, nagkaroon po ng, um, uh, caucus kahapon. Hmm. And of course, that is a caucus na, I will not be mentioning ano napag-usapan doon dahil that is a caucus among the, uh, private caucus among all of us. Pero what I will mention is kung ano 'yung hindi po napag-usapan doon. Hindi po napag-usapan doon ang usapin ng Floor Leader. Yun po ang gusto kong sabihin. Marami tayong magka, uh, magsisinwangaling sa harap ng Allah o sa sabihin natin na napag-usapan doon ang, ang, about sa Floor Leader. Now, ano po ang gusto kong sabihin? Sinabi natin kanina na united upon electing a Speaker and I agree with that. We have united and I am happy upon that. Walay hamd. Dahil ang Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala ay kanyang ipinagbawal na mag-disunite ang mga Muslim. So, masaya ako doon. Pero sinasabi natin na tayo ay nag-unite. Pero bakit po, biglaan na lang at mabilisan na merong motion papalitan ng Floor Leader na hindi naman natin napag-usapan ito? Kung gusto natin na magkaroon tayo ng sense na tayo ay united, gusto kong hingiin sa atin lahat, na ipark na natin ang usapan ito, let's suspend this session, pa-assume natin with dignity and honor ang ating Speaker na bago lang natin na-elect. Hindi pa siya nakatake oath, meron na tayong mga movements agad-agad. Pag-usapan lang natin ito, lahat naman ang bagay ay napapag-usapan. Wag natin pong pagmadaliin. Yun po ang aking hingi. Dahil kung tayo ay magrobo ngayon, makikita na tayo ay divided, sa totoo lang. Dahil some of us will make a stand. So please, I implore, with due respect to the Chief Minister, with due respect sa lahat ng aking makasamaan, I implore, we should park this issue for now. Thank you very much.
It may ask markier, but the MP markier.
Uh, before I speak, I, I, I want everyone to correct me if I am not in the right way. I welcome to be corrected at once. I am not a lawyer. And with all my respect to the Office of the Chief Minister and the Chief Minister himself. In a parliamentary system of government, Parliament is supreme. There is no such thing as three branches of government, Executive, Legislative, and Judiciary. Here, in a parliamentary system, especially that is provided by the Bangsa Muro Organic Law, there are only two authorities. One is the Legislative Authority and the other is Executive Authority. The Legislative Authority is headed by the Speaker of Parliament. Uh, the Executive is headed by the Chief Minister. So on that note, with all my respect to you, Chief Minister, I think the issue of, uh, uh, the leadership or the Committee Chair or the Floor Leader should be discussed with the new Speaker presiding the session. The Chief Minister is to govern. Uh, the Speaker is to legislate. So there is a division of, uh, labor, of all functions. So that's my view, uh, Your Honor, that the issue of the leadership in the House aside from the Speaker should be discussed and deliberated on by Parliament itself. So that's why I'm reiterating here that we should park the issue and probably come up with some solutions later, maybe a caucus for that purpose. So that, uh, although it's part of the rules and procedure that we can discuss these things, but we are all Bangsa Muro, we should preserve our unity. It's not about having the majority to bulldoze everything because at the end of the day, it would not contribute to the unity of our people. So that is my view, Your Honor, that we should park the issue and discuss it later. We can sort it out among ourselves. This is not about power. This is about the collective interest of our people wherein we have to work on it. It's not about personality, it's not about, uh, particular group, but we are working here as a unit, as Member of Parliament and we have to legislate considering not, not petty interest but the collective higher interest of our people. So with that, thank you very much, uh, Your Honor.
Just to clear matter, uh, with all due respect to the one who is, uh, standing, MP Rasul, I just want to clear that, uh, is there any legal argument that the Chief Minister or the Presiding Officer now cannot decide on other matters except for the speakership?
Mister Chief Minister, sir?
MP, MP, MP Rasul, please.
Yes, sir, I believe there's no objections for you presiding this and it's already informed by, uh, MP Joe Lorena that, uh, one of our senior DFL Deputy Floor Leaders that during this, in this time, uh, the election of the speakership also carries with it the election of other officers. Why? Because there's also a change in command, there's a change of majority position. Then, uh, Mister Chief Minister, I would like to believe that our brother, MP Sol Bayam, as the floor, uh, he requested to open the position of Floor Leader. Then as our brother, MP Teng Ambuluto, informed us, the, the request to suspend the session, it can be treated as an objection. So if there's an objection in relation to a motion, then the course of action is for us to deliberate, meaning the plenary can stand and voice out our, our votes. It's not just, uh, dividing the house, it's actually the house saying what is their interest. So meaning, uh, Chief Minister, uh, we are here as one, as one whole parliamentary, uh, one unit. So you can hear our voice at this moment if you will just allow the vote for the request of MP Sol Bayam.
So, uh, wait, si MP Seema?
Yes, uh, Mister, Mister Chief Minister, with, with utmost respect to you as the leader of the Bangsa Muro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao, you have facilitated the election of the Speaker of the Parliament. And we have unanimously agreed to the consensus that you have established among those contending Members of the Parliament who vied for the position of the speakership. And therefore, Mister Speaker, since we have agreed, we have stood up for him, the, the new Speaker of the Parliament, let us allow the Speaker of the Parliament to preside on this matter, Mister Speaker, in consultation with the Chief Minister himself. And therefore, Mister Speaker, on that note, uh, Mister Chief Minister, on that note, I fully suggest that the Chief Minister suspend this matter and look and allow us all to look into the rules and not necessarily suspending or objecting to the motion that was stated by the gentleman from Cotabato City. Thank you. For a few minutes, Mister Chief Minister, two minutes.
Mister Chief Minister, I utmost, I utmost object to the disrespect to the Presiding Officer, Mister Speaker, because you are now currently the Speaker of the House and we're also settling the officership of the House. And I object the motion and I ask that mistaken off the record.
Uh, at onu nagip, MP?
Mister Speaker, may I, Mister Chief Minister, may I object to the, to be, to my statements being mistaken off the record?
I have the floor, uh, Deputy Speaker. I have been recognized by the Presiding Officer. So if we are to proceed as respectable Members of this august body, the first requirement is for us to... the first requirement is for us to respect the Presiding Officer. With that said, uh, the Presiding Officer, what is at hand is a question of procedure. Uh, and I, I've heard a lot of other issues and in fact, other motions being proposed without the pending motion being ruled upon. The parliamentary rule requires that every motion presented to the body will have to be decided. It cannot simply be overruled by another motion such that we will divert the attention of the Parliament from addressing a very specific motion that is pending, uh, on the floor. And the motion pending is the motion proposed by the honorable Bayam, which is a motion to declare vacant the position of the floor leader. We have not heard an objection into the motion. What has been proposed by the, by the lady is another motion. And if such is the case, the, the Presiding Officer should rule on the pending motion, which is the declaration of the vacancy of the position of floor leader. If we are too generous to concede that the other motion now being presented would serve as an objection to the original motion, then we will have to go to the appropriate action of the Parliament, which is to rule on the motion and in this case by dividing the House. So if I may just reiterate, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, we will have to go back to the original motion, which is pending because it has not been withdrawn by the Moval. And therefore, to honor his motion and to observe the appropriate rules of the Parliament, we will have to rule on the motion to declare the position of floor leader as vacant. Any other motion will have to await the resolution of the pending motion before us. That is my humble submission, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay.
Mr. Presiding Officer, if I may?
Please, please, madam.
Uh, I acknowledge that the gentleman has cited the rules of the Parliament and if I may refer to Section 8, a privileged motion. Privileged motions are motions not relating to the pending question but are of so great importance as to require them to take precedence over all other questions and on account of their high privilege, they are non-debatable. Subsidiary motions cannot be applied to privileged motions except the motions to fix the time to which, to adjourn and to take a recess. The following are the privileged motions. Letter A, fix the time to which to adjourn if made while another question is pending. Letter B, adjourn if unqualified and if it has not, it does not affect, it has not the effect to dissolve the Parliament. Letter C, take a recess if made when another question is pending. Letter D, raise a question of privilege and letter E, call for orders of the day. Mr. Speaker, since this is a privileged motion, the motion to suspend or take a recess if made when another question is pending, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer, then I submit that it takes precedence over the original motion. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So, um, uh, Nagip, uh, MP Nagip, maganda na Cotabato City?
Very brief, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer. One, it is not true that a motion to suspend is a privileged motion. It's not a privileged motion. And therefore, we will have to go back to the original motion and rule on the same.
So, um, MP Ram Sulu, Tawi Tawi, sir?
Speaker, just, uh, one sense of opinion. This is a parliament. The rules may be provided for by the rules, but the rule release the majority of the members of the parliament. It being said, then, uh, the bulk of the majority of the parliament should decide an issue, whether there is a privileged motion or not because even the rules can be modified with the majority of the parliament. This is the rule in a collegial budget like this. And decision of this nature should be decided by the parliament, not just decided by simple caucuses. With all due respect, uh, because we come from the more far areas of the Parliament, of the Bangsa Moro, then we may not have the time to come back and forth for process of deciding on a matter of this importance like the matter of deciding the officers of the Parliament. That would be an injustice to us from the farther south if that is the case because decision could be delayed in order for us not to come back for that. So I, I, I would insist that we go by the process. We go by the process. If the process is short, then we go by the vote, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, uh, MP Ram Sulu or Dabo or? Dito lang sa Tabitari?
Uh, Mr. Chief Minister, as a simple procedural, simple procedural concern, may I ask, uh, the, Mr. Speaker, the Secretary General, if there was a second to the motion? Okay, well, so procedurally, if there was a second, then, uh, if there is an objection, the procedure is to go into debate, uh, deliberate on the motion and the objections. Um, if, uh, there will be no conciliation or reconciliation, if the two opposing, uh, uh, positions are not, uh, reconcilable or are not reconciled, then that's the time that we go to a, to divide the House. Uh, this is, this is the procedure as far as I know. Mr. Chief Minister?
Yes, uh, MP Nabiltan? MP, MP Nabiltan?
Bismillah Rahman Raheem. I'd like to weigh in. I'd like to request that we set aside the rules in momentarily. We set aside the legalities, whether it is privileged motion or not. But if it's acceptable to all, I will move that, uh, we suspend for two minutes and so that if there is any possibility of a settlement during the suspension, then we can go on without dividing the House so that we can cushion the impact of the changes. Now, if that is, if it is acceptable to all. And, uh, if it is acceptable, I have talked with our floor leader, but I, I'm not sure whether he will, she will give in. But that is the most honorable way that I can think of to stop, to stop the debate and, uh, come out with a unity of stand. So I so moved that we suspend for two minutes.
So, Mr. Chief Minister?
Before I ruled on that motion, Gentleman Pam Sulu, I just want to ask the gentleman who is the proponent of the motion is, uh, uh, Gentleman Bayam, are you willing to withdraw your motion or?
Uh, Mr. Chief Minister, I humbly would like to state that I am not withdrawing my two motions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chief Minister.
Okay, thank you. The motion of, uh, Nabiltan, since it was seconded and objection, then we will, uh, suspend the session for two minutes.
Before we proceed, I just want to remind my appeal before we start this session that I appeal for calmness of mind, clarity of purpose, and the highest decorum be pitting this public, this parliament. So, the two minutes have already lapsed, it's already seven minutes. Then everybody has given applause to explain, to talk, to everything. And I just want again to, since the proponent of the discussion or the case at hand is Bayam, I just want to request MP Bayam to say something.
May I know, surely, I will just go ahead and explain, so that it can be more transparent? I know that many people are watching us, not only here. As I know, I'm not an advocate. But I just listened, I followed, I was informed about the procedure of the parliament. Now, I asked the president, is there any other matter? It's not a question of who is the floor leader. It's not based on personality. The distance we have here is to make a change in the set of officials, officers, and mandato of the parliament. If you please, if you forgive me, if it's possible, the interpretation of what I did previously, that until now, I haven't withdrawn. Here we see that democracy is alive. A motion was made by your community to declare the floor leader position vacant. A statement was made by our friend. So what was my response? I made a change in my motion to divide the house. So, I repeat, I'm not an advocate. But from what I think, I say, no matter how angry I am, I still think what I did is right. That means, I give the whole floor, to every member of this parliament, the decision to decide on democracy. That's all, Mr. Chief Minister, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that explanation, madam.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chief Minister, and thank you to the gentleman. I understand that no matter who does or did anything, it's obviously what he did, his own. Regardless of whether it is personality-based or because who is the chair of the floor, Mr. President. One of the tenets of democracy is respect. The respect that is known early and the respect that is seen as the support of whoever is talking or the subject matter. As said by MP Hashim earlier, there is an opportunity for discussion this morning during the caucus, and your community is there, 63, if I'm not mistaken, is there? There are still some hours left before this session, that may have a way to say and show such a kind of respect, Mr. President, that this will happen. My respect for our chief minister and all members of the parliament, so I don't see that I'm going to do this before. But since this happened, I don't even need to replace the airtime that we see on live streaming on Facebook. I don't need to replace the airtime. So I also want to make sure that if I don't see it like this. As was said by the chief minister earlier, that's right, calmness of mind, clarity of purpose, where is the clarity of purpose? If we had the first opportunity to talk about it and avoid this kind of scandal... And I thank Deputy Speaker Nabil Tan for stepping up and convincing the chief minister to finally suspend. And thank you to the chief minister as president officer for hiding the call to suspend. That's right, Mr. Chief Minister, you are the president officer, I don't have anything to do, no matter what objection I make here, if it's already been set, what will happen today. Yesterday, MP Hashim made a statement and said that everything that happened to us is by will of Allah, and I came here. I'm sorry if there are such emotions, because people are just... But I wish, I wish that this parliament exercised prudence and wisdom in putting someone in this kind of situation. With that, President, I leave it up to you to resolve the motions, I don't have anything to do. The two-minute suspension was not very helpful, I guess. And, inshallah, as all that happened to me, Mr. Chief Minister, in the next year, inshallah, the people, the friends who are famous... Sir, I'm glad you're with us in this. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, your floor leader, for that explanation. It's really very clear for us to understand your position. But I must also be clear on this. My first statement is that today's session presents to the election of speaker. Nothing more, nothing less. But... I always say... That... Always, when I preside meetings, I really ask myself if there are other matters. So, what happened is, is there other matters, not really all eyes witness, not really secreted one, but it is a normal situation on the part of the president officer. So since we have already concluded the speakership, then it's my habit, and I don't have anything to say, so, there is this gentleman from Cota Batu City, Magindanao, Bayam, who stood for his position on that. So, in this case, I may request again, Bayam, to stand up?
Yes, Mr. Chief Minister, if I may proceed yet again. Because, ah, it's not too late, it's not too late, I don't have anything to discuss, just like if you remember the redistricting. It was I who asked that it be referred back to committee, because my apprehension, my fear was it will be declared unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Okay, that's already water under the bridge. I just want to show you that I am my own man. All of us are here, with your respect, now I'm just making amends to you. All of us are here, we are the presidential appointees, equal footing we are here. This isn't a parliament by personality, it's not like that. I didn't come here to the parliament to look for a solution. I just saw the opportunity that maybe, to make a change in the new mandato. In open, I asked that the floor leader position be vacant. Now, if it's not true, after dividing the house and voting my motion, and I proved that it's still good status, because yesterday, when we discussed, there's no such thing as speaker, the rest, status quo. There's no such thing. So I hope, among my people here... It's over now, okay? Don't let them make too much of an emotional tension. Let's be very objective here. Now, if my motion is to divide the house, to declare the position of floor leader vacant, if we divide the house, vote, and vote, my motion is... I'm just checking, is the parliament still with the mandate? If we discuss it yesterday, especially those who are watching us, the topic is speaker. But there's no status quo. There's no such thing, because if that's the case, I would have been wrong. I repeat, there's no personalities here. My sister, there's no personalities here, only for me. I'm just checking, is the parliament still with the mandate? Is there a mandate still? If we discuss it yesterday, especially those who are watching us, the topic is speaker. But there's no status quo. There's no such thing, because if that's the case, I would have been wrong. That's all for me. What I did, I made a motion to declare the vacant position of floor leader, now, if there's objection, I said, what can I do if we divide the house? When I voted, I voted, my case, my case, Mr. Chief Minister. So that's all, now I'm just making amends to you. There's no personalities here. I'm waiting, I'm not an advocate, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's right, there's no mistake. It's up to you, the people of parliament, the people of the parliament, the process. So that's all, Mr. Chief Minister, thank you very much.
Yes, madam, floor leader.
Yes, Mr. Chief Minister, in that case, since there's no consensus whether the speaker is still vacant, Mr. Speaker, I would like to move that we declare all deputy speakers, deputy floor leaders as vacant as well, Mr. Speaker.
So please, attorney, MP.
And we just go back to the basic parliamentary rules, that there is a pending motion earlier made by the honourable Bayam. The same has not been resolved, it cannot be set aside, it cannot be defeated by simply proposing another motion. So, may I request, Mr. President, that we stick by the rules and that we resolve first the foremost motion made hours ago by the honourable Bayam, that we declare the position of floor leader as vacant. And that if we are generous enough to concede that other motions being proposed be considered an objection, the natural course of action is to divide the house. I submit, Mr. President.
Thank you, MP Nagy, for that, and I still need another legal process. Please, Buluto.
Mr. Speaker, we do understand the sentiments that is enveloping the conversation, Mr. Speaker, but as have been manifested, Mr. Speaker, we have a pending motion, Mr. Speaker. The motion is to declare the position of floor leader vacant. And considering that there was a manifestation of our floor leader right now, it may be taken as an objection on the matter, and the only thing that is left for disciplinary through your leadership, Mr. Speaker, is to decide over that motion, whether to approve or disapprove, to agree or not to agree with that, the motion to declare the position of floor leader as vacant. That's all for now. As to other motions, as manifested by the honourable Sinarimbo, that the other motions can be taken on their own proper time, after we have resolved first the only issue pending before the floor, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for all that, since we have already gone through the process, consultations, and we are these two minutes discussions, but nothing happened in the discussion. Then, I made a statement, both legal minds, and I can't say illegal minds, but both legal minds and not legal opinions. So, I just want to request the proponents of the motion to reiterate this motion.
Mr. Chief Minister, I reiterate, I cannot reiterate enough, that we divide the house pertaining to the declaration of the floor leader position vacant. Thank you very much, Mr. Chief Minister.
So, there is a motion for the, to divide the house or to declare the position of floor leader vacant, then, is there any seconded? 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 Okay, we're hearing none objection, the motion is... So, we will divide the house. Secretariat, please. Yes, nominal, or pay one euro.
May I call the members of the secretariat?
Maybe, may I call the members of the secretariat to please, uh, uh, facilitate the counting of the votes? The division of the house is, uh, the motions of, uh, uh, the Honorable MP Bayan, uh, to divide the house, uh, for the declarations of the floor leader vacant. For those, for those who are favoring the motion, please stand. Stand. Please stand.
Nagmagstindig na lang lahat-lat.
Okay, please sit down. Okay, for those who are not in favor for the declarations of the office of the floor, or the floor leader, uh, vacant, please stand. Okay, please sit down. For those whose vote is abstention, please rise the same. Mr. Presi, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have now the result of the votations. For votes, uh, in favor of declaring the, the floor leader vacant, we have forty-eight votes. For those who are not in favor of declaring the office of the, or the floor leader vacant, we have twenty-one votes and we have one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Secretariat, for that. Since the voting has, uh, done, uh, to be sure, Secretariat, if, uh, kung sasabihin natin yes, ito na 'yung pumabor sa, uh, motion na ivacant 'yung position ng floor leader. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer.
No votes, ang ibig sabihin ito 'yung hindi pumabor sa, uh, uh, declaring the op, uh, floor leader na vacant.
That's right, Your Honor.
Yung abstain, pwedeng hindi niya gusto 'yung dalawa na yun, pwedeng gusto niya lahat. Isa lang man ang abstain natin, huh? Abstain. Okay, so, in this case, I am declaring that the yes favoring the, uh, uh, declaring the, uh, floor leader is vacant up it because it's forty-nine votes, forty-eight, forty-eight votes. So thank you very much for this, so may I seek the audience, may, may I seek the, uh, assistance of some for what is the next option on this? Brother, brother, uh, maybe, MP, MP, uh, floor leader, you have?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Presiding Officer, there is also a pending motion to declare the positions of deputy speakers and deputy floor leaders are vacant, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, before that, before we conduct motion, madam, then, uh, there is this brother from Sulu who, Tawi-Tawi who are, who wants to, uh, expound something on us. Maybe, MP Lorena?
Uh, our Chief Minister, while with all your respect, while there is, uh, a motion from the floor to declare other vacant, but perhaps we can proceed first with the election of the floor leader and opening the nomination of the floor leader. If it is timely, then I would be proposing, I'll be nominating a floor leader for purposes of unity of all, Mr. Speaker. If the motion, if it is, if we are opening the floor, Mr. Speaker. So we want it done first with the, uh, floor leader, then subsequently, then the motion can follow.
Uh, excuse me, MP Joe Lorena, are you stating that you are moved to, if pwedeng mag-nominate tayo?
Oh, I move to nominate the floor leader, then we can proceed to the other motion after that so that we will not be opening a lot of nominations subsequently.
In that case, do we need this, uh, the, do we need the approval of the body on that? Or, or just to pursue it?
There is a ruling of the chair.
Okay, please, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, uh, for purposes of unity, I'd like to nominate a, a MLF UBGP nominee uh, that will bring about unity to all of us and at the same time manifest inclusivity in this parliament. I am humbly nominating a good brother from the Parthis island of Dubarm, the island of Tawi-Tawi, and I'm nominating John Anthony Lim for the position of floor leader. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. So do we, do you have something to say, Rakin?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Minister, Presiding Officer. Uh, with that, uh, nomination, Mr. Presiding Officer, I respectfully, respectfully move that we close the previous nomination for the...
Mr. Chair, before we, before we close the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Okay, please.
Uh, I would like, uh, to nominate again, uh, our ex-floor leader, Shah Lyah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In that case, have you, have you, what is your, what is your motion just now?
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Chief Minister, Presiding Officer, I therefore now move that we close the nomination for the position of floor leader.
So it was seconded? Seconded, then? So there is another motion there, then maybe I really want again to the, to to the rescue of the legal mind because, uh, there is two motions already. Motions of Rakin to, uh, close the nomination and the motion of another gentleman to another, another motion. So, will you please assist me on this? Yes, please.
Mr. Chief Minister, the nomination has not been closed before, uh, our colleague uh, gave his nomination of the former floor leader.
Hmm.
Uh, so I believe that the, yeah, there are two nominations. Therefore, I believe that the consequence of the two nominations is to divide the house again.
Yes.
Uh, so that, uh, we can vote on the, uh, on who should be the next floor leader.
So what is the procedure of Rakin, MP Rakin?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, Chief Minister. Uh, I would like to withdraw my previous motion to close the nomination and I therefore now move that we proceed with the election uh, for the position of floor leader.
So the position of the floor leader is the one who nominated by Joe Lorena is Jet Lim, who's also a member of the MLF nominee and a UBGP for that matter. And, uh, the nomination of, uh, again of, uh, uh, Attorney Lyah, our, our, our floor leader. So, see? If I may reiterate, sir. MP.
Yes, thank you, uh, Presiding Officer and the Honorable Chief, sir. Uh, may, may I request for, uh, a few minutes, uh, suspension, sir?
Okay.
Just to, uh, para mag-usapan further 'yung, uh, the matter.
Maybe you, you must be particular on the minutes, huh? So how many minutes you want?
Uh, just a few minutes, sir, ten minutes.
Then, uh, two minutes. Uh, with your respect to Rakin, then we will grant the two minutes suspension of the meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you.
and all others who are instrument in getting a consensus. So magpapasalamat tayo kay Brother Ikbal. Ikbal being his being na yang natin 'yung Vice President natin sa party, Vice President natin sa MILF. So it's only proper that he's the one, in the absence of Brother Hajmurad Ibrahim, he's the one who can settle this issue because Jet Lim and Lisa and Attorney Eliha is both UBJP and both nominee of the MILF. So if I may request, maybe floor leader, ma'am, no? So anyone from you who can say, who can speak?
With that, Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my motion, earlier motion, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My motion to nominate Shah Elijah Dumama as a floor leader.
That's your motion to, you are withdrawing that kind of motion?
Yes, sir.
Recently, okay, thank you very much. So...
Mr. Chief Minister?
Deputy Speaker?
Yes, I move to close the nomination and proceed with the consensus vote on MP Jet Lim as the new floor leader.
Okay, madam floor leader, do you have any merong kapabang sa sabihin? Ranapu, so Secretariat will now proceed to the... Is it the nominal voting, Deputy Speaker? Is it this time standing lap? So Deputy or Secretary General Secretary, you may facilitate the consensus voting?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. For those who are in favor that nominating Honorable MP Jet Lim as the floor leader of the BTF Parliament, please rise.
Okay, please. So, thank you, thank you. Have you counted it, Secretariat? Or is there need to count it, or what? Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for have your seat now.
For formality sake, for those who are not in favor of Honorable Jet Lim as our floor leader, please do the same, please rise.
Parang dalaw kami ni Jay Kwan, kaila nagtaayong.
So the Secretariat declares that no. For those who want to abstain, please do the same, please rise. There is no abstention. Mr. Presiding Officer, I think that's the result now of the votations for the floor leader.
Okay, thank you very much.
We declare that the same in attendance as the number of the votes, unanimous. Because we observe that everyone has stand.
Thank you.
Lahat naman, walang abstention, walang no.
Thank you very much, Secretariat.
Hold present, 70.
Regarding the, what we call the compromise rule whatsoever, consensus, consensus, consensus. May I request MP Brother Mahajirikbal to please say something about this, ma'am, please?
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer, I had an earlier motion and I say this with full respect to the leadership of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front and thank you everyone for the opportunity to be your floor leader for the last three years. I believe that our accomplishments in the parliament have been a testament of collective leadership and unity and to the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, to Honorable Chairman Al Hajmurad Ibrahim. Salamat sa tiwala rin for the years that I have been serving in the Bangsa-Moro government. Mr. Presiding Officer, in view of the guidance, both religious, spiritual and from Kaká Jet Lim, our new floor leader, I congratulate you. I move that, I move to withdraw my earlier motion to open, to declare the deputy speakerships and deputy floor leaderships as vacant.
Thank you very much, floor leader, for that. So is there any other to say something about this? Please, MP Baintan, you have something to say? Brother, Brother Mahajirikbal is your floor, please.
I think I am one of the happiest persons today for having resolve on the basis of camaraderie, brotherhood and for the higher interest of our people on the issue of the floor leader of this parliament. And I would like to thank Tony Lai Mama for floor leader and of course Tony Jet Lim for their heart-to-heart discussion a while ago and they were able to come up with what Attorney Elijah Dumama had stated a while ago. And on the part of the leadership of the MILF, presented by your throning and the rest of our comrades, we strive so much that if this issue can be or will be resolved army commonly for the highest interest of this parliament, for the sake of unity and for the sake of our people. And that's, I think that's the power of negotiation. At the end of the day, everybody is happy. Tony Lai is happy and I would like to congratulate her for having agreed to our formula and I know it's very, very emotional on her part but I think the fact that he had overcome the emotional issue or emotional aspect of the problem is something that we can congratulate. And for Jet Lim, I think he was so gentleman that he approached Tony Lai to speak about the issue and I think practically there is no change here. It's just a matter of one personality for another personality but Attorney Lai and Attorney Lim are both for the interest of the parliament, for the Bangsa-Moro government and for the entire Bangsa-Moro people. So that's why, while we had facilitated the engagement with Attorney Lai and of course with the Chief Minister and the rest of our comrades or colleagues in this parliament, but the credit will be given to both lady and gentleman for having talked out the thing regarding the issue of the floor leader. So and of course, we talked to the Chief Minister and we come out with some way forward and I think it should be discussed later regarding the other positions or assignments in this parliament. But after that, Your Honor, I was about, I was supposed to be the one who will nominate MP Mohamed Yakub for the speakership of this parliament but thank you very much, Brother MP Nabiltan, for having the opportunity to nominate him. It does not make any difference whether I will be the one nominating him or you are nominating him, does not make any difference at all. But anyway, for the sake of having registered my statement regarding the issue of speakership, please allow me to read some portion of my supposed nomination speech because I tried my level best to come up with a very short or brief statement leading to the nomination of Mohamed Yakub. So I read it for the indulgence of this honorable body and this is the speech or nomination speech. I stand before you today to personally nominate someone as the next speaker after the passing of the latest speaker, Attorney Pagalian Malindo. May Allah grant him as one of the dwellers of paradise. My nominee may not be the best for the position of speakership in terms of the knowledge of the law but my trust on him is beyond doubt. I can vouch for his capability to firmly perform the job well. More importantly, I can vouch for his unwavering commitment to pursue the right of the Bangsa-Moro people for self-determination. And why my nominee has to come from the members of this parliament? Because both the cap and the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law provided that the transition, whether one post-it extension or postponement of the election should or must be led by the MILF. This is one of the reasons why the MILF through the United Bangsa-Moro Justice Party wants the election for members of parliament to take place as scheduled last May 2025. We want to give every member of the parliament or any regional political party to lead the parliament or the bar. Now, I take it upon myself as the second most senior member of the MILF and as member of this august body, the distinct honor and privilege to nominate MP Mohamed Yakub for the position of speakership of the Bangsa-Moro parliament. Marami salamat ko for giving me the chance to speak my heart in relation to the issue of the floor leader and of course the issue of the speakership of parliament. Chakral salam.
Deputy Speaker Baintan, MP Baintan.
Waalaikum, good afternoon to everyone. Mr. Speaker, Presiding Officer, in view of the vacancy of the position of Deputy Speaker, Attorney Jet Lim, I would like to manifest, I would like to put a motion, omnibus motion. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer, I would like to nominate MP Attorney Joe Lorena as replacement of the position of MP Jet Lim and also nominate MP Attorney Shah Elijah Dumama as a additional deputy speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Seconded, hearing none, the motion is approved. So, yes, MP Baintan?
I think there is no need for a votation if there is no objection?
No need.
No need. Mr. Speaker, I would like to also put another motion in view of the vacancy of the position of Deputy Floor Leader, now Deputy Speaker, Attorney Joe Lorena. I'd like to nominate MP Attorney Rakim as a new deputy floor leader, a new deputy floor leader by MP Attorney Lorena. So move.
Okay, hearing, hearing none, hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So in this case, please, MP Ramzuluh, General Member Ramzuluh.
Before I move to adjourn, Mr. Chief Minister, I just like to commend this...
Please, please, we cannot adjourn yet because we have to sort the, the new speaker and the new...
Mr. Chief Minister, Mr. Presiding Officer, I would just like to make a manifestation and commendation to the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority members as well as the leaders who are having a consensus on an issue that is very difficult. Indeed, what we have done today is a very difficult action on our part but it only shows that indeed in the regular parliament, this will really happen where people from different parties, different backgrounds will have to agree and vote. But it is already stated in the Holy Quran that indeed we have created you from men and women into nations and tribes so that you can get to know one another and therefore diversity is really given and it is how we resolve that adversity. And today we have seen that indeed a consensus government, a consensus can be arrived, a coalition of people from different backgrounds. We had seen that we are still led by the UBJP as speaker and floor leader but we also have the different political parties, different people from different provinces and the local government converging in one government. This is a clear indication that we are indeed maturing. Sa ati mga kababayan, normal po na magdebate. Hindi po kami nag-aaway-away. At nakita rin po natin, at the end of the day, our leaders can democratically dialogue and come up with a solution. Here today, we have seen that indeed, we can institutionalize collaboration. That indeed, we can operate a way of having a consensus. And that after all the debates, indeed, we can embody conciliation. And these three aspects can have a reinforcing effect. Once we saw that there was conciliation, it was easier to collaborate. And when we had collaborated, it was easier to come up with a consensus. These are the hallmarks of a new type of government that we are coming into. Because before, it was always kung sino ang pinakamarami, kanya na lahat excluded ang iba. And therefore, there was always the permanent minority putting in the brakes in order to move forward. But now, we saw an election of a speaker where there was no objection. Everybody stood up and we have one government. At the end of the day, we had all arrived at a consensus and we could all, Insha Allah, go home. Mighty and proud that the Bangsamuro will move forward. That any misunderstanding can be resolved through consensus, collaboration and convergence of us all. So again, congratulations to all the MPs and all our leaders and the newly elected officers.
Thank you very much for that manifestation. So, maybe we now come to the out-taking. So is there any ceremonial on this? So, maybe together with Jet Lim? And the newly Deputy Speaker? Do you have? Secretariat, do you have this? Huh? Huh? Yuna, yuna, yuna. Munadaw yang according to the secretariat kerangan daw sia yuna. Yuna, pagkatapos ang familiyan nya. Kung dalawang familia dahil hindi to, para sigurado. Kung dalawang anak po di rin. Sige, okay. May request the family, any family and the loving wife of the newly elected Speaker of the BGA Parliament to please join. Microphone ay sa? Microphone ay sa? Microphone ay sa? Can we have one microphone? One microphone? Bismillahirohmanirohim. Bismillahirohmanirohim.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim.
I swear to Almighty Allah.
I swear to the Almighty Allah.
The Most Supreme.
The Most Supreme.
The Beneficent.
The Beneficent.
The Merciful.
The Merciful.
The All-Knowing.
The All-Knowing.
I shall perform.
I shall perform.
My duties.
My duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
Entrusted to me.
Entrusted to me.
As part of Bangsamuro government.
As part of the Bangsamuro government.
With utmost.
With utmost.
Dedication.
Dedication.
Devotion.
Devotion.
Honesty.
Honesty.
Justice.
Justice.
Integrity.
Integrity.
Completely devoid.
Completely devoid.
Of all.
Of all.
The evils.
Evils.
Of governance.
Of governance.
Especially.
Especially.
Grap.
Grap.
And corruption.
And corruption.
I shall protect.
I shall protect.
The legitimate, the rights.
The legitimate rights.
Trust.
And.
Interest.
Interest.
Of all.
Of all.
Faithful.
People.
In the area.
In the area.
Strongly fight.
Strongly fight.
Depression.
The proliferation.
In use of illegal.
And use of illegal.
Drugs.
Drugs.
And other evils.
And other evils.
Of society.
Of society.
Peace and security.
And devote to peace and security.
And peace and security. At all times.
At all times.
In the Bangsamuro.
In the Bangsamuro.
Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao.
Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Territory.
In the entire.
In the entire.
Country.
Country.
So may help my Allah.
So help me Allah.
Bismillahirohmanirohim.
Bismillahirohmanirohim.
Your name?
I Muhammad S. Yakub.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the position.
To the position.
Of.
Of speaker of the Bangsamuro Transition Authority Parliament.
Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Bar.
Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Bar.
Hereby.
Hereby.
Solemnly.
Solemnly.
I wait, I swear.
Swear.
That.
That.
Will we, will will.
I will, I will will.
And faithfully.
Fit and faithfully.
The charge.
Discharge.
To the base.
To the base.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
Just duties.
The duties.
Of me.
Of my.
Present.
Present.
Position.
Position.
And of all.
And of all.
Others.
Others.
I may.
I may.
Er, er after.
Er after.
Hold.
Hold.
Under.
Under.
The Republic of the Philippines.
The Republic of the Philippines.
The support, that I support.
That I support.
Uh, and.
And.
Depends or defend.
Depend.
And the constitution.
The constitution.
Of the Republic of the Philippines.
Of the Philippines.
In the organic law.
In the organic law.
For the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao.
For the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao.
That I will.
That I will.
Through. Through, through fight, a trophy.
Through fit.
And elegance.
And elegance.
To the same that will obey.
That will obey.
To the laws.
The laws.
Legal.
Legal.
Orders.
Orders.
And decrease.
And decrease.
Uh, promulgated.
Promulgated.
By the Dali.
By the Julie.
Julie constituted.
Constituted.
Authorities.
Authorities.
Of the Republic of the Bang, uh, Republic of the Philippines.
The Republic of the Philippines.
That I will.
That I will.
Impose this.
Impose this.
Obligation.
Obligation.
Upon myself.
Upon myself.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily.
Without.
Without.
Mental reservation.
Reservation.
Of, uh, for force.
For force.
Of the evasion.
Of the evasion.
So help my Allah.
So help me Allah.
Bismillahirohmanirohim. Our honorable Chief Minister Abdurrauf Makakwa, honorable deputy speakers, floor leaders and deputy floor leaders, public servants, development partners, religious leaders and most importantly, the Bangsamuro people. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Today, I stand not in triumph, but in humility. Not for celebration, but for dedication. I stand before you to accept the speakership with full sincerity and deep responsibility. The rule you have entrusted to me as speaker of the Bangsamuro Transition Authority Parliament. This is not merely a position. It is a amana, sacred trust that I vow to carry in the light of our serviceion for moral governance. Moral governance is not a slogan. It is a system of leadership anchored in high values, ethical conduct and public accountability. It demands that we as leaders govern with justice, sincerity and integrity. Also said that our ultimate accountability is not only to our constituent, but to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. As speaker, I pledge to ensure that the parliament of the Bangsamuro becomes a true embodiment of these values. A parliament that is transparent, principled, people-centered and driven by the pursuit of justice. To translate this vision into action, allow me to share the five core functions of the speakers of the parliament which I commit to perform with excellence if I can and with the strategy. As speaker, my primary role is to preside over the sessions of the parliament with fairness, order and discipline. I will ensure that debates are conducted with respect, inclusivity and adherence to rules allowing all members regardless of appellation to voice their views. In doing so, we foster an environment where ideas are valued over title and where laws are crafted through rational discourse, not political maneuvering. I am entrusted to uphold the integrity of our internal rules and the parliamentary process that guide our legislative work. We will strengthen institutional discipline by viewing and defining our rules of procedure, ensuring they promote transparency, efficiency and anti-corruption safeguards. Every member will be expected to uphold the quorum and I will lead by example in maintaining the dignity of our chamber. The speaker represents the parliament in both internal and external engagement. Include intergovernmental coordination and public relations. I will work to amplify the voice of the parliament across the Bangsamuro and beyond. By building partnership with civil society, local governments and international institutions, I will ensure that our laws are upheld, upheld by the people and that parliament is seen as a partner in the peace, development and justice. The speaker plays a key role in organizing the flow of legislation and supporting the work of parliamentary committees. I will push for the clear, inclusive and prioritized legislative agenda. Built on the pillars of moral governance, we will empower our committees to focus on key reforms in education, health, economic development, peace-building, justice and indigenous people rights. The legislative calendar will not be reactive. It will be strategic and mission-driven. Finally, the speaker is also responsible for the overall management and operational integrity of the parliament as institution. I commit to institutionalizing open government practices within parliament. This includes publishing records, enhancing public access to decisions and building a performance monitoring system that tracks legislative outcomes and. legislative outcomes and public impact We will also invest in the capacity building of members and staff so that this institution becomes truly resilient and professional Our journey toward autonomy did not begin in the conference room It began in the heart of our people Through decades of sacrifices, we must ensure that this Parliament is not a reward for the few but a vehicle of justice and opportunity for the many Let every law we pass be a tribute to our martyrs Let every decision we make be in the service of our youth Lead every session we hold be a step closer to peace prosperity, and dignity for all With humility, in my heart and resolve in my spirit, I offer this I will lead this Parliament with honesty neutrality, and respect for the rule of law I will uphold the sacred principle of moral governance as both a standard and shield I will serve not to be served and I will lead not to rule but to unite the remembering And that leadership is not privilege, it is responsibility Together, let us build the Bangsamuro that honors its past serves its past people and prepare its future Through legislaton- legislation rooted in trust and leadership grounded in moral purposes Wabillahi Taufiq wal hidayah, Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh With that The session is motopropio suspended for two minutes or three minutes to pave the way for the assumption of the pres- of the new speaker So So I am now relinquishing the pres- preside nito today newly speaker Congratulation speaker, thank you very much Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, now the session is resumed So So now we proceed to uh ot- office of the uh Plu leader and deputy uh Plu leaders May we request I'm included deputy speakers and deputy Plu leader There are five Uh Four, four Yeah Okay Plu leader, tengan eh uh, senjen sino sino magtop Silai asket da eh ano muna eh dipa muna Plu leader muna
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim Uh yung ini bigay ko kay Chief Minister, siya ang ma- patiko sa inyo
So Uh now repeat after me I
I Jat Anthony Jet Lim
Having been elected to the po- the position of
Having been elected to the position of Plu leader
of Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Farm
Bangsamuro Transition Authority Parliament, Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Farm
hereby solemnly swear
hereby solemnly swear
That I will well and faithfully discharge
That I will well and faithfully discharge
To the base of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
The duties of my present position
The duties of my present position
And of all others
And of all others
I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines
I may hereafter hold under Republic of the Philippines
That I support
That I support
And depend the constitution of the Republic of the Philippines
And defend the constitution of the Philippines
And the organic law for the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao
And the organic law for the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao
And that I will bear through
That I will bear through
Faith and allegiance
Faith and allegiance
To the same
To the same
That I will obey the laws
That will obey the laws
Legal orders
Legal orders
And decrees
And decrees
Formulated by the duly constituted authorities
Formulated by the duly constituted authorities
Of the Republic of the Philippines
Of the Republic of the Philippines
That I will impose
That I will impose
This obligation upon myself
This obligation upon myself
Voluntarily
Voluntarily
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion
So help me Allah
So help me Allah
So another, yeah, another ot- office Merupa, 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 merupa Merupa This is out of uh moral governance I swear
I swear to the Almighty Allah
To the Almighty Allah The Most Supreme
The Most Supreme
The Most Beneficent
The Most Beneficent
The Merciful
The Merciful
The All-Knowing
The All-Knowing
I shall perform
I shall perform
My duties and responsibilities
My duties and responsibilities
Entrusted to me
Entrusted to me
As part of the Bangsamuro Government
As part of the Bangsamuro Government
With utmost dedication
With utmost dedication
Devotion
Devotion
Honesty
Honesty
Justice
Justice
Integrity
Integrity
Completely devoid
Completely devoid
Of all the evils of the governance
Of all the evils of governance
Especially graft and corruption
Especially graft and corruption
I shall protect the legitimate rights
I shall protect the legitimate rights
And interest of all people
And interest of all people
In the area
In the area
Strongly fight the proliferation
Strongly fight the proliferation
And use of illegal drugs
And use of illegal drugs
And add other evils of society
And other evils of society
And endeavor to promote
And endeavor to promote
And sustain peace and security
And sustain peace and security
At all times
At all times
In the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region
In the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region
Territory
Territory
And in the entire country
And in the entire country
So help me Allah
So help me Allah, Inshaallah
So deputy Plu leader Ya, makipictur daw ang island families Bangsamuro Tony, dito So now we invite the deputy Plu leaders So please repeat uh after me I
I Amir Zakaria Rakim
Having been elected to the position of
Having been elected to the position of Deputy Plu leader of the Bangsamuro Transition Authority Parliament
Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Farm
Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Farm
hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge
Hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge
To the base of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
The duties of my present position
The duties of my present position
And all others
And all others
I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines
May hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines
That I support and depend the constitution of the Philippines
That I support and defend the constitution of the Philippines
And the organic law
The organic law
For the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao
For the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao
That I will bear through faith and allegiance
That I will bear through faith and allegiance to
To the same
To the same
That I will obey the laws
That I will obey the laws
Legal orders
Legal orders
And this decrees formulated
And decrees formulated
By the duly constituted
By the duly constituted
Authorities
Authorities
Of the Republic of the Philippines
The Republic of the Philippines
That I will impose
That I will impose
This obligation
This obligation
Upon myself
Upon myself
Voluntarily
Voluntarily
Without mental reservation
Without mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
So help me Allah
So help me Allah
Shukran And another ot- uh moral governance Uh again, repeat after me I swear To the Almighty Allah The Most Supreme
The Most Supreme
The Beneficent
The Beneficent
The Merciful
The Merciful
The All-Knowing
The All-Knowing
I shall perform
As your leader
My duties
My duties
And responsibilities
Responsibilities
Entrusted to me
Entrusted to me
As part of the Bangsamuro Government
As part of the Bangsamuro Government
With utmost dedication
With utmost dedication
Devotion
Devotion
Honesty, honesty
Honesty
Justice
Justice
Integrity
Integrity
Completely devoid
Completely devoid
Of all the evils of the governance
Of the evils of the governance
Especially graft, graft and corruption
Grap- corruption
I shall protect
I shall protect
The legitimate rights
Legitimate rights
And interest of all people
Interest of all people
In the area
In the area
Strongly fight the proliferation
Strongly fight the proliferation
And use of illegal drugs
Use of illegal drugs
And other evils of society
Other evils of society
And endeavor to promote
And endeavor to promote
And sustain
Sustain
Peace and security
Peace and security
At all times
At all times
In the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region
In the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region
Territory
Territory
In the entire country
In the entire country
So help me Allah Probes and pro
Oke koh, dito koh Merpo, standby lang kona Iidin naman, standby lang koh Standby lang koh Standby lang
So, members of the parliament, one minute suspension. So, floor leader, what is, what is next?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wabarakatuh. Before I move to adjourn, there is one matter that I'd like to refer to the floor which is the affirmation of the appointment of vice chair for the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management which was vacated by now president of MSU, the Honorable Vaisal Intago. She will be replaced by the good deputy speaker, the Honorable Bayintan Ampatuan.
So, floor leader, ano 'yung process para ma- confirm na natin?
I move to I move for the affirmation of the Honorable Bayintan Ampatuan as the new vice chair of the Committee of Finance, Budget, and Management.
Any objection? None? The motion duly seconded and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Congratulations. There being no other matters, I respectfully move for the adjournment of today's session until further notice.
So the session is adjourned.